Ladies and gentlemen, we please call to order the meeting of the Board of Trustees for November 12th, 2017. Madam Secretary, if you could please call. Thank you. We're calling to order the meeting of our trustee meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, 2017. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
And Sunny Zia.
Here.
First item, 1.3, Public Comments on Closed Session Items. The total of three minutes will be allowed to each speaker. We do have six speakers. There will be a clock that will show you where you are in your time. We're going to start with the first one, which I was informing you.
Could you read the closed session items?
The items?
The description.
All right. The following items for closed session will be: Labor negotiations pursuant to government code, Agency E. Is this one with Dr. Romelli? Unrepresented employees.
It's right on the screen.
Oh, we're using our screen. Should I look over my shoulder? LBCCFA Negotiations Item Pursuiting Government Code, 1.5, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code, Agent Designated Representative Dr. Reagan Romelli, Unrepresented Employees Management. Those are the only two items, correct, Madam Secretary? We do have six speakers. The first one, if you could. Seth, you will be first, followed by Robin Arias. Then we'll have Haley, Heather, Colleen. And if you don't want to go in that order, don't mind, because it leaves us all to the same item. And then Janay. All items 1.4. So you can come to the podium, identify yourself. Seth? And you'll see up here, and it'll just be counting down. But if it reaches zero, just stop for a moment. It'll go off, and we'll just bring it back on. So if you could please keep your comments, so it's three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Board President Jeff Kellogg, esteemed Board Members, Superintendent President Dr. Romelli, a team of VPs, Academic Senate President, Dear Faculty and Students, it is truly an honor and rare privilege to address the Board of Trustees. Stella Bestrova, a dynamic student in the Library Technician Program writes, "Learning about information competency understands the value of knowledge. Library becomes a mysterious magic area where you feel yourself a tiny particle of mankind's wisdom. It teaches you to acquire and evaluate information, organize and share it with others. All these skills are necessary for everyone who is willing to be educated and successful in studies and in life." Stella's poignant insight harks back to my own childhood, when my parents of humble status offered a large plate of rice, a coconut and fruits. To the very first teacher, were held their small fingers to write, "Omm," on the rice wheel plate to initiate me into the world of knowledge and wisdom to come. Had I been in the village, my parents would have to offer as well, a cow and two goats, which they could ill afford, not a bad deal for respected teachers in India. It is my parents' sacrifices that brought me to the United States for higher education and gave me the privilege to stand before you today and speak on behalf of 300-plus outstanding fellow faculty who have dedicated themselves tirelessly to bring the success of legions of students such as Stella. They brought a sense of purpose and direction with education pathways to students where there was confusion, light and hope where there was diffidence and despondence, a moral compass where there was apathy. The modest 5.85 raise over the length of the contract is a modicum increase that would go a long way to boost our faculty morale, marshal faculty resources in boosting FTEs, improve and streamline the educational programs to fall in sync with UCs and CSUs, and produce a more robust number of job-related and highly skilled terminal degrees. The time is now, therefore, for the board to -- that has stood so by steadfastly in the past to endorse this modest raise and mark this watershed moment in the 90th of LBCC's vibrant and rich history as a new beginning under the dynamic leadership of our newly hired President Dr. Romelli to implement our bold initiatives constructed with strict adherence to shared governance, including a reorg that posits structural elements to support better branding, better recruitment of students, better retention and transfer, better tackling of food deprivation and homelessness amongst students, and if I may say so, our indebtedness to Dr. Baxter, Vice President Sunny Zia, Faculty Member Emily Barrera, and Shamika Simpson for fighting on this humane issue, better OER implementation for zero techwood degrees, and finally, making LBCC the only education. Let's come together as a Viking family and bring this initiative to fruition, to sign off on the extended faculty contract that is fair, equitable, and conducive to raising faculty morale. To the board once again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Namaste, namaste, namaste.
Good evening, Superintendent President Romelli, Board Trustee President Kellogg, Board and Board of Trustee Members. I'd like to first thank the Board members for responding to my lab invitations that were sent out last spring. Tonight, I wanted to share more of a personal story that is connected to the proposed increase to both salary and lab parity. When I was hired back in 2011, before the economic downturn, I was just grateful to have a full-time job. At the time, it was just my husband and myself, and to be quite honest, I was not as personally invested in union activities. Then a major life-changing event came along in 2015 after a nine-month incubation period. I gave birth to twin boys. With a very high cost of daycare, I'm too embarrassed to say, it resulted in me being much more aware of union activities on campus. The other life-changing event was when my husband was hired full-time at another community college. He works in the exact same department, teaching the exact same discipline. What caught my attention was the fact that despite that I have my doctorate degree and he has his master's, in five years, he will pass me over in regards to salary, even though he was just hired in 2016. I share this because Long Beach City College has a great opportunity, not only to invest in its faculty members with the salary increase, but also to redefine what it means to teach, not just oversee lab. In the past, maybe the term "lab" implied an open lab environment and/or less involvement from the instructors in their interactions with their students. Currently, this is just not the case. Instructors have a hand in the active delivery of the curriculum content; we just use a variety of delivery methods. In my microbiology lab, I see some of my old students here. I lecture, I meet SLOs, I demonstrate techniques, and I oversee the safety of 40-plus students in my lab, as I have 36 bunsen burners on all the time in lab. Also, a lot of our department plans revolve around materials and supplies needed for lab. I'd like to end on a positive note. I'm confident that with our new leadership at the helm, the college will make an effort to close these gaps in regards to salary and lab parity. I'm a realist. I know that gaps will always occur. But moving forward, we will do our best to bridge those gaps. To our wonderful, hard-working faculty that showed up tonight, I'm also confident that they will take on the challenge of boosting our enrollment numbers, and we will do our part to support the college's efforts. Thank you. Thank you.
I was going to say, it doesn't matter if you come up there, whichever order you want.
Good afternoon, Board President Kellogg, Board of Trustee Members, and Superintendent President President Romelli. I'm a little nervous, so I'm going to try not to. After teaching for two community colleges in Orange County, I feel that LBCC is the institution where I can really make a difference in student success. And I'm here requesting your approval in increasing the DH reassign time and lab and lecture parity pay. As DH, my work week includes teaching, curriculum development, faculty and department operational support, staff training, program advisement, coordinates of high school tours and articulation, and class scheduling, just to name a few. I often put in a 12-hour workday, sometimes more, to accomplish these tasks, and the weekend to catch up with other responsibilities, such as setting up job fairs for students, banquet, community relations. Consequently, all of this is to increase enrollment. As an instructor with lab component, shopping for specialty items takes at least two hours on the weekend for me. We do have food vendors with delivery, but they either have no specialty items or require large-volume purchases. So cost control is one of our stern learning outcomes, and also industry standard. Therefore, cutting costs and eliminate waste is an important teaching lesson. Every faculty in our department comes in at least one hour before class start time to measure ingredients, collecting equipment, and general kitchen setup, just so that they can perform cooking demonstrations. This pedagogy provides students with the right skill to enter the workforce. After lab, faculty spends extra time to make certain that all cooking equipments are off for safety issues, and also all refrigeration are at correct temperature as health department regulations. Chef Pierre and I stay after lab every day to prep for the next day. There are other duties we perform beyond our contractual obligations, however, there's too numerous to list here. And in addition, our students also need mentoring outside classroom instructions, especially in life choices, and that has been tremendously impactful to our students' education and career. I strongly believe that in order to achieve our mission, we need this level of dedication. We would like to be recognized for our work and commitment to our students, and increase in compensation in these areas would demonstrate to us that we are valued and appreciated. Thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
For the record, that was Haley, but if you'd identify yourself when you start also, just for our secretary. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Superintendent President Romelli, President Trustee, Board President Trustee Kellogg, and Board of Trustee Members. My name is Heather D., and I'm a full-time faculty member in the Life Science Department and current department head. I'm in front of you today to talk about the rationale for lecture-lab parity. As a lab instructor, I've taught at the college since 2008 and have always taught the Human Anatomy and Physiology course. The laboratory component of the course is not a separate experience, but an extension of lecture. It offers the students a hands-on opportunity to experience their learning, and that learning is guided by and facilitated by the instructor. I'd like to share three important points that make lab a very intensive experience for our students, yet a huge responsibility for the instructor, and one in particular is safety. Our labs in the Life Science require that our students use instruments such as hot plates, bunsen burners, scalpels to dissect specimens such as cats and fetal pigs, cow and sheep eyes. It's all very enriching, yet potentially dangerous experiences. The instructor must always facilitate the lab experience stressing safe practices and constantly make sure that proper safety regulations are followed, so we can never leave the classroom. In fact, the instructor must move around the room demonstrating the use of this equipment, and this requires the vigilant eye and attention of the instructor. Although we have a constant regard for safety, faculty in the Life Science always add students beyond their cap. I add to every physical seat in my class. Many of my colleagues do the same, because we try and serve as many students as possible. Research from the Texas State University shows that the optimal number of students that should be in a laboratory class is 24, yet most Life Science classes are filled to 40 on average. So despite the literature's recommendations on maintaining enrollment number, we fill our classes beyond this, and this demonstrates our commitment to serve as many students as possible. The last point I'd like to make is that the laboratory experience allows for greater student-faculty interaction. I circulate around the room, interacting with small groups, often interacting one-on-one with students, and the research supports this positive interaction. Students who interact with their instructors tend to feel a greater sense of belonging, persistence from semester to semester, and often reach their completion goals. So the investment we put into the student laboratory experience requires a commitment to student learning, and we're all committed to our students and the best experience in the classroom that they can take and use beyond our class. For listening to my rationale and for asking for lecture-lab parity, I'd like to invite each of you to experience the laboratory environment, so you have an open invitation to come to my lab. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Colleen?
Good afternoon to President Romelli, Board of Trustees, and staff. I'm Colleen Sterrett, and I teach in the Visual and Media Arts Department. I've been teaching studio art for 34 years, the last 20 here at Long Beach City College. I agree with my colleagues from the sciences that relayed their comments to you about lecture-lab parity, and I also agree that it is archaic and unfair across the board to not pay us equally for both lab and lecture time. If the college receives 100% funding, why should we only get 75? I can only surmise that you really don't truly understand what we do in our lecture classes, or our lecture-lab classes, so I'd like to explain a bit what happens in the arts. In studio arts classes, we might officially lecture for an hour, but just as much or more instruction goes on in what would be considered lab time. Actually, most instruction, content instruction, occurs in the lab portion of the class. Lecture and lab are very much entwined in the process of hands-on learning. One does not learn to make a sculpture, or a painting, or a drawing from listening to a lecture. Just as learning a dance or playing the violin requires practice and hands-on work, you must actually do it. So when students are working, it's time for individual feedback, perhaps failure, and then more feedback, and critical analysis until they understand why their endeavor is working or not. Studio arts are places of dynamic, interactive learning, where the instructor guides the students as they apply theory and concepts and engage creatively in the subject matter. If this sounds familiar to you, it's because it's the exact same format as a flipped classroom. And I can't imagine that our instructors in math or English, who have recently applied flipped classroom learning methods in their classes, would want their salaries reduced because of this kind of absurd idea of lecture-lab parity, or of not equal pay for lecture-lab. The last thing I wanted to mention is the strategic plan. Our department just spent the Veterans Day holiday working on our three-year program plan, and so we had a time to go over the college mission and the strategic plan. Throughout the strategic plan, I want to list a few things that caught my attention. The college values and celebrates the contributions of faculty and staff and its community partners in supporting students. Invest in people and support structures for transformation. Attract, support, and retain a diverse and exemplary workforce. Build community. Cultivate --
-- a climate of respect and inclusion.
-- and support our internal and external communities. Revitalize a positive, mutually supportive, and caring Long Beach City College community that sustains a sense of belonging and affirms contributions of all members. The college community has been through a lot in the last six years, and we don't need to go through all of that, but we have been very traumatized in many ways from things like discontinuance, as you would recall. It feels that just recently, we've kind of turned a corner here, and I often discuss with my students that we must basically say what we mean and mean what we say. And I would actually love to believe that the administration and the board really believes those words in the strategic plan, and we would like to be treated with respect and be respected as mutual partners in this endeavor for student success. So please reconsider this when you are coming to your conclusions about contract negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Janay, you're the last speaker.
Good evening, Board President Kellogg, Board of Trustee Members, Superintendent President Romelli, my esteemed faculty who are filling up this room with red shirts, educating our future, and our amazing students, and our administrators. On behalf of our membership as LBCCFA Faculty Association President, I am asking the district for a fair contract for full-time faculty. I am happy for both CHI and AFT, who have finalized their contracts with the district. Our negotiators have worked with the district for more than a year at the table, and we have had productive exchanges across the table. Our contract proposal is fair. It includes improvements to lecture-lab parity, more base support for our dedicated department heads, and a modest, across-the-board, on-schedule salary increase for all full-time faculty. If we reach an agreement at the table this Thursday, November 16th, it will signal a move in a positive direction for labor peace at Long Beach City College. It will also demonstrate to our new faculty evidence of LBCCFA and the district working together to reach a fair and amicable resolution. Then together, we can move to address other institutional issues in support of our strategic plan. Long Beach City College faculty are instrumental in delivering student success, and the working conditions of our faculty are the learning conditions of our students. LBCCFA looks forward to continued partnerships with the district in an effort to advance the primary mission of the college, our students' success, including course, degree, and certificate completion, transfer success, and student equity. Thank you.
Thanks, Janay. All right. We have, Madam Secretary, no other speakers. No other speakers. We have no other speakers at this time. We are going to then adjourn to closed session. We should return. We are supposed to return about 5:00, but we will see how the closed session goes. So until that point in time, we are adjourned. Thank you. I would like to reconvene the meeting for November 14th, 2017, of the Board of Trustees for Long Beach Community College District. If we could all please stand, and I'm going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Raise your hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance.
-- to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we miss someone out there who is a veteran? We were looking to see someone to lead us through the flag. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
And Student Trustee Hor Hill.
Here. Thank you very much. First item is 2.4, Report on Closed Session Items. There is nothing to report out in that session. Next item is 2.5. Student trustee, you will be able to vote on this. The approval of the minutes of the October 24th, 2017 meeting. Can I entertain a motion of second? Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Question, comments on item 2.5. Hearing none. Student trustee, your vote, please, advisory vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. 2.6, Introduction and Special Announcements. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce Professor Pat McKeon, who has brought some students with him tonight to discuss some wonderful awards that they have won.
Welcome, Pat.
Thank you so much, President Romelli, trustees, students, administrators, colleagues in the community. I do have some awards to announce, and I'd like to pass along a couple of the plaques here that you can see, and I'll pick them up at the end of my presentation at the other I'm pleased to announce a list of 14 winners of recent journalism awards. May I please ask the audience to hold its applause until the list is complete. Led by General Excellence for the Viking News Print Edition, and six individual awards by Lisette Mendoza Tapia, the Long Beach Journalism Program earned 14 awards October 14th at the Journalism Association of Community Colleges Southern Section Conference. Lisette took first place for photo essay, second for environmental portrait and inside-page design, honorable mentions for an online photo essay in video journalism, and a meritorious award for enterprise news story. She teamed with Sienna Thomas and Isabel Kaim for the video honor, and with Daniel Rivera for the enterprise story. Josh Miller took home a third-place award for illustration, and a fourth for front-page design. Presley Swerengen gained third for a sports feature photo, and Aaron Assis earned honorable mention for sports action photo. All those awards were gained through the students' work in the 2016-17 school year, published in LBCCViking.com online edition and the Viking News Print Edition. During the On the Spot Contest at the conference at Cal State Fullerton, Myla Bringes gained honorable mention for critical review, Karen Ramirez for opinion writing, and Hannah Robinson in news writing. The Viking is advised by Chris Viola and me, with expert assistance from Walter Hammerwald and Cindy Fry. Please join me in applause for outstanding students. Also tonight, very briefly, my beginning news-writing students are learning how to cover government, and will be talking with trustees, administrators, and other leaders of the college after the meeting, or by phone, email, or in person in the coming days to complete their assignments. Finally, we're thankful for the college's support at all levels, especially from the ASB, the Foundation, the English Department, School of Language Arts and Come Studies, and the CTE program that are providing funding for student success, valuable equipment, and conferences this year. In addition, our university and industry partners continue to be valuable allies for our students as they transfer and enter the work world. Cal State's Long Beach and Fullerton, USC, the Press Telegram, and the California News Publishers Association have been especially helpful in the past year. Also, sorry I couldn't attend the October 24th meeting, that including Mr. John Pope's update on the 90th anniversary project that I'm pleased to serve as history book author. I was really fortunate that night, my daughter and I were forced to go to a sporting event at Dodger Stadium, something called the World Series, so I hope you understand. Thank you for your time and support, all of us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Members of the board, at this time, any comments?
I just wanted to.
I was going to say, usually does. So Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
I have to comment.
Trustee Zia.
And congratulate our wonderful journalism program. I'm particularly biased. I'm so proud of the work that you do year after year, no matter what competition, or convention, or how far you have to drive our students up and down the state. I'm thrilled that Long Beach City College has the reputation that it has for producing such remarkable work, and also such remarkable journalists. They're aspiring journalists until they win these competitions, and then they're the real thing. And I can't wait, and I'm hopeful, that our program begins competing at the national level and starts entering some bigger and better competitions, so handle that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Trustee Zia.
I too want to echo trustee Malauulu's remarks, and really thank you for the great work you do. And Pat McKeon, you're wonderful. Every year, you make us proud by leading the effort, really educating our students, and grooming the cream of the crop, so I just want to thank you for pursuing this major that is so vital now, the major and the discipline of journalism. I hope you pursue it. I hope you go all out, because it is a very important time to defend the truth. Thank you.
And Pat, and to all of the people involved with journalism, it's really been remarkable to see that students attend community colleges based on lots of factors, obviously, but a lot of times, it's what attracts them here. Whether you know it or not, you can go up through the state of California and see other community colleges. community colleges that either don't even do newspapers anymore, it's no longer even a subject matter. So to see what we still maintain here at Long Beach City College in regard to the journalism with our newspaper and all the other activities we have, is really remarkable, but it's also impressive the fact that it's done so well. So our congratulations again to all the hard work that goes into it, and is definitely noticed by people throughout the state of California, as were the plaques that you will get back unless, did the plaques, or if they didn't, just check our student trustee. He's the one that usually grabs things and goes somewhere, so...
President Kellogg, I believe our student trustee would like to also...
Student trustee?
I just want to say, thank you so much, Professor Pat, for having me. In the little presentation, they actually had like a little interview, and I got to answer some questions regarding what my duty as a student trustee is, serving on the board, and I just really want to say thank you for taking time off your class and having me there and speaking on behalf of the Board of Trustees. So once again, I appreciate everything you're doing for the Journalism Department, and ultimately for the newspaper as a whole. Thank you again.
Great job, everybody. Superintendent President, is that it?
Yes, sir. That's it.
All right. Thank you all. If you want, you can stay for the whole meeting, and if you want to leave, we will not take that personally. 2.7, reordering the agenda. I don't have anything on this item, so we can move forward. Next item, 2.8, ASB Present Report. Welcome.
Thank you. Real quick. Good evening, members of the public, faculty and staff, and Board of Trustees. Just a few things to report on. First off, I have to say this, homecoming went great a few weeks ago. LA Harbor went down, 26 to 19, and I just really have to commend the football program. They actually won their third straight conference title against, El Camino was 55 to 48, so that was really good. Next up is DACA Workshop. In order for our students to be more well-informed about, you know, what exactly is happening with that, the Student Equity Team is hosting a DACA Workshop tomorrow, 12 noon to 1:30 PM in Room QQ 202. Next is the Great American Smokeout. It's hosted by the Student Health Services. It'll be held Thursday, November 16th, from 10 to 12 at PCC and 2 to 4 at LAC. Both of them are pretty much outside in the quad areas, Student Union of PCC and in the E quad at LAC. And one of the main things for ASB coming up is this weekend, Hor Hill and I are very excited to be able to go to Sacramento and represent LBCC at the Student Senate for California Community Colleges General Assembly. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's pretty much where the 114 California community colleges go and come together and pretty much discuss resolutions and things that are impacting our students, not only here, but also abroad, from Northern California all the way down to the South. And we pretty much vote on the different issues and see what the California Community Colleges' students' standpoint is on those issues. For, in order to gather student input, we're actually having two open forums to discuss resolutions for the SSC General Assembly this weekend. The first one is actually tomorrow at LAC at 1:30 in the Fishbowl, and if you don't know where the Fishbowl is, it's inside the E building. And at PCC, there will be one on Thursday from 11 to 12 noon. And finally, to report, on November 30th, that's a Thursday, the Multicultural Festival will be occurring. It's going to be hosted by the LAC Cultural Affairs. It's pretty much a collaborative effort between the clubs and organizations on campus, displaying and giving out food and representing different cultures, and it's going to be pretty fun. I invite all of you guys to come by. And are there any questions?
Questions, members of the board?
All right. With that, I'm actually gonna go home. I didn't get to celebrate my birthday yesterday with my family, so... Yeah, I had like, I had like two exams this morning, so yeah, I had to study all day. But with that, I'll leave you all. You guys have a wonderful day, and go Viking.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Javier. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, God, we were just, don't let anyone...
Mazel tov.
Unfortunately, that was all recorded, so... All right, thank you very much. The next item, 2.9, we have no public comments on agenda items, so we can move to the Board of Trustees. The regular items, 3.1, Revised Board Policy, regular meaning of the board. This is an action item. This is that the Board of Trustees approved the Revised Board Policy 2028, regular board meeting submitted. It's the first reading. Did I need to go in anything on this?
No, it's an actual reading.
Second reading, final reading? Oh, that's right, because it's an action. Student trustee, you'll be able to vote on this as well. Let me first have a, entertain a motion to approve, item 3.1. Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Student trustee, your vote, advisory vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Next item is Presentations, 4.1, Legislative Update. So I will turn to the Superintendent President. Welcome, Dale.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Dale Shimisaki, who is the CEO of Strategic Education Services and our chief legislative lobbyist in Sacramento, and he is going to give us a presentation tonight of how we fared on our legislative agenda this past year, and a discussion of where we see potential legislative agenda for the next year. Thank you, Dale. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dale.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Dale Shimisaki and CEO of Strategic Education Services, and I'd like to start off by saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you this year, or this past year. We always look forward to working with this district and pursuing your legislative goals, and I think it was a very productive year, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Today, I was going to go through three topics. One is to just briefly touch on some key education bills that were adopted in the 2017 session, and then also touch on a couple of immigration bills that will have an impact on the Long Beach Community College District, and then finally talk a little bit about what we could expect for next year. The first bill I wanted to talk about was AB 1533 by your local representative, Assembly Member O'Donnell, to repeal the sunset date for the Long Beach College Promise. This allows the program to continue indefinitely, and this bill not only passed, but it passed with unanimous votes in all the committees and on the floor of the Assembly and Senate, and was signed into law by the governor. The second bill was AB 19 by Santiago, which is the California Promise Act, and what this bill does is it waives community college fees for first-time community college students who are enrolled full-time for one year, and they define a full-time community college student as someone who has more than 12 units. The implementation of this bill is subject to funding in the Annual Budget Act. They estimate that if all the districts choose to participate in the program, that it will cost $30 million. There is an expectation that the governor will fund this measure since he signed the measure this last October. One thing to note about the AB 19, that there are a set of requirements that districts must comply with in order to participate in the program. In addition, students must complete and submit a FAFSA or California Dream Act application. It's my understanding on the requirements that are listed here that Long Beach is already engaged in doing these kinds of activities, and that because you're in full compliance of these requirements, you will be eligible for funding. The third education bill is AB 705 by Assembly Member Irwin on matriculation and assessment, and this is a fairly significant change from current practice. It requires the use of multiple measures in the assessment and placement of students in college-level courses and math classes and in English. Instead of using just assessment, you are now called upon to look at high school coursework, grades, and high school GPA. And if the information isn't available, the district must use self-reported high school data reported by the students. One other thing I would note in relation to AB 705, that in part because the measure was signed into law by the governor, the state chancellor of the community colleges, Chancellor Eloy Oakley, has terminated the California Common Assessment Initiative, which was designed to develop a common set of assessment tools for the system. Because of, partly because of AB 705, this initiative is not needed anymore, and what they were planning to do instead is create an implementation team to help implement the provisions of 705. The next two bills are immigration bills, and the first one is the most significant one of the session, is SB 54 by the President Pro Tem of the Senate, Kevin DeLeón, regarding the sharing of data. And essentially, this bill prohibits any state or local agency from sharing any data, any resources, or personnel in the enforcement of immigration. There are certain exceptions that are delineated in the legislation, but the general tenet is that state and local agencies aren't prohibited from sharing information, resources, or personnel. The second key provision in this measure is that the California Attorney General is required to develop model policies for state and local agencies by April of next year, and that the state and local agencies are expected to adopt a model policy or an equivalent by no later than June of next year. The next immigration bill is sort of a companion to SB 54. It's AB 21 by Assembly Member Colra, and it requires not just public post-secondary institutions, but also private post-secondary institutions to establish policies to safeguard against immigration enforcement activities on the campus. And in relation to SB 54, where the Attorney General adopts or creates these model policies that specifies that college campuses and institutions of higher education have to adopt a policy by no later than March 1st of 2019. In addition, that they would like to see the policies that are adopted are posted on your websites, and that copies are made available as guidance to students, faculty, and staff, letting them know of their rights related to immigration. The next set of slides talk about next year, what we can expect for next year, and the first is on the state budget. In the 2017-18 budget, the legislature adopted language in the trailer bill to authorize an $850 million cut to Proposition 98 over the next three years, and this affects both K-12 schools and community colleges. And as you can see, in the first year, the first installment of that cut will be $450 million. Your share as a district will be about $840,000, and on a per FTES basis, it's about $42 per student. A number of the education groups are upset about this cut, and they are already advocating for the repeal and restoration of these funds, and this will be a major priority. The concern that the education groups had was that this cut was made when no other state agency in government or local government received this cut, and there was no evidence that the cut was even needed, that the economy was still seeming to go strong, and there was no evidence that there was a falloff in tax revenues. The next issue is regarding stabilization funding, and as you know, in your district and many other districts across the state, that there is significant declines in enrollment. And under current law, if enrollment declines, districts receive at least the same level of funding as they did in the prior year to give them an opportunity to restore their enrollment to the higher level. This adjustment is known as stabilization funding, but again, given the strong economy and the decreasing high school population, it's very difficult for districts, not just here in Long Beach, but all over the state, to recoup the steep enrollment declines that have happened over the last couple of years. Given this, there is a great concern that a state advocacy effort needs to be mounted to give districts an additional year or more of stabilization funding. This will give districts a little more time to help restore their enrollments and try to recapture them to their peak levels. The final piece of legislation we could expect some discussion on is AB 387 by Assembly Member Thurman. It's regarding the application of the minimum wage law, and it applies to, it had originally applied to all those programs in work experience education for the purposes of licensure, registration, or certification in the allied health profession. Late in the process, as the bill was moving through the Assembly, an amendment was taken so it wouldn't apply to educational institutions. However, there were still concerns in the bill, and the author, with the agreement of the bill sponsor, SEIU, and the California Community College Chancellor's Office, they agreed to put the bill on active file to discuss the need for further amendments. So the bill is still technically alive, but they are discussing amendments to see if we could get consensus among the parties as to what to do next. That's the update that I have for today, and there are any comments or questions?
Question or comments, members of the board at this time? Chair recognizes trustee Zia, followed by anyone. Trustee Zia?
Thank you, Dale. Great job. My question was more in reference to AB 19. I understand there was quite a bit of celebration about it, and I, for one, I'm very excited about this free community college for the first year for full-time students. Do we have a timeline as far as when this will be implemented, and as far as the gauge for the $30 million funding? You may have already explained this, and forgive me if I've missed it.
No, it hasn't specifically been brought up about the implementation, but we assume that the governor's budget will include the money in the January budget, and if the money's in the January budget and adopted for June, it could potentially start as early as the summer term before the fall term of 2018. So you're allowed one full year, starting the summer term of 2018, to get the program implemented.
Okay, so we can't really, we have to wait until like that fall of 2018 in order to be able to accept those students, and potentially the state will find...
Right, and there's obviously some contingency planning that needs to take place, because the budget's moving at one level, and you have your class schedules, and you have your enrollment of students taking place, and you're going to have to inform potential students that this legislation has a potential of being funded, and that there might be availability of financial aid for this program if it becomes available. So you have to sort of work on two tracks, letting them know that what's going on at the state level and what's happening...
And is it going to be evenly distributed with all the 72 districts, or how is the distribution of the funding?
Well, that's a good question, because we don't have any data on how much enrollments will increase across the state as a result of this program, and we don't have information yet on the number of districts across the state that's going to participate in the program, because as you see in the, that there are certain requirements that they must follow, and there will be districts that will not be able to follow all this in one year. You're fortunate, because you were ahead of the curve with the Long Beach Promise, and you've been doing a lot of these things already. So a lot will depend on what other districts' energy level is to participate, but I think they will impute an estimate based on your current enrollment mix statewide. So if you're X percentage of enrollment, they'll probably give you an apportionment based on that level, that approximate level.
So if the enrollment is lower than average statewide, is that how, are they the most susceptible districts to get the funding? Is that how? I'm just trying to understand what you mean by that.
No, I think what, I think they'll look at your current mix of enrollment, or your current distribution of enrollment, and based on that will give you like a principal apportionment or an initial apportionment based on that. And as you know, with all the apportements, you get a... And as you know, with all the apportements, you get an allocation based on your prior year's enrollment levels. And then throughout the year, as things change and you submit your enrollment updates, that the statewide chancellor's office adjusts it up or down accordingly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other members? Chairperson is trustee Malauulu?
Hello, Dale. Nice to see you again. I have one quick question. This is a really solid overview of those items that have already been named and presented. Are you aware of any other potential legislation coming down the pike? Is there, I've heard different grumblings from different groups in response to what's happening in Washington, you know, in our own state capital. But I don't know that anything has, you know, come out of committee yet. Do you know of anything that we should be watchful of?
There hasn't been anything tangible or in print yet. When the legislature reconvenes in January 3rd, they will start the process of introducing legislation once again. And they have until the middle of January to submit legislative proposals to be developed by the Legislative Council. And then they have the middle of February to actually put it in print. So by the middle of February, we'll have a good sense of what's going to be introduced. And there are discussions taking place now with different institutions and groups across the state about proposals for next year. The stabilization item I mentioned is going to be talked about a lot. And eventually, there'll be some sort of proposal, either in the budget or in legislation, that will emerge. But there'll be a lot of other discussions taking place on other items as well. But it's a little bit early in the process, because the legislature is not back in session yet. But once they're in session January 3rd, you'll see something more formal emerge.
Other members at this time? Chairperson is trustee Otto?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
I've got a kind of a crystal ball question for you. I know that there is ongoing concern about the funding formula for community colleges. And I think since I began this work quite a while ago, there's been discussion about the funding formula. It's my understanding that the chancellor's office now has a work group on fiscal affairs, basically. And part of that is looking at stabilization and restoration. And we got communication from our superintendent president today that 51 of the 72 districts are on either stabilization or restoration, that they're declining enrollments in K-12, and we're competing for the fewer students that are coming out. What do you think the likelihood of either a new funding formula or action on restoration and stabilization, in other words, extending restoration beyond one year to two years or three years, would happen in the next year?
I think on the stabilization/restoration question, I think there is a higher percentage of something happening. Because, as you quoted, the 51 districts, that's a large number of districts in the system. And that's a huge impact that needs to be addressed and looked at. In terms of a longer-term funding formula, I think it'll be a heavier lift, only because you've got a governor who's on his final year. There's going to be a new governor coming in. And I think given they're trying to revamp the whole new funding formula in one year, might be difficult to do, and it might be something the governor will not want to take on. He might address other issues, other priorities, and he'll leave that to the new governor. But the stabilization issue is so critical and so severe right now, I think it has to be confronted in some shape or form. And at least for a one-year item in the budget, I'd like to see a longer-term fix myself, like a two- or three-year phase in. But I think a one-year thing, a one-year adjustment needs to be made.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other members at this time? The only question that I had on AB 19 was the fact that, the question with the governor going to be funding it or not, how is it going to get funded, his next go-around? I know when the governor's office or the finance people had issues about individuals that were going to be able to take advantage of this, yet they really didn't qualify as for low incomes, et cetera, et cetera. Regardless, though, for the opportunity for us, because the question has come up about what we already provide in a way with our college promise, funding for individuals for the first two semesters. And how we're going to have to think about if this is funded in the next budget cycle for $30 million, is that how that's going to impact us, where we potentially could offer than that on top of what we offer currently, and how that may be an advantage. So for us, this is something to keep our eye on as we come back up to the first of the year. Because this could get us back to what we originally had always, community colleges. For some people, it was free, with the exception of a $5 student card or something like that. So there are some great opportunities. The question I only am concerned about is because I know the governor did have issues with it originally, and the intent, so hopefully it'll get worked out. But that gives this college a great opportunity, because many colleges are trying to catch up to what we've been doing already with the college promise and now have this in place. So the devil, of course, will be in the details, but this is some real opportunities. The other one, 705, which is interesting, again, only because, and the chancellor has done some things that should not be surprising at all, simply because he did it here. And that was the whole thing with testing on the, and that was a real difficult challenge. When this college came out front very early, saying, "We're going to place students in a different testing to place them properly." And just to paraphrase it, we were having students who were put in areas that they were not in credit courses, they were in non-credit courses, which extended their time to where they could get the credit courses, which means they can't graduate in a timely fashion. And they would get frustrated, rightfully so. So it's not surprising that the chancellor stepped in. But when 705 came through, I remember going, "They're doing exactly what Long Beach City College has been doing, and we did it as a model years and years ago." And many people questioned it at the time. So it's interesting to see the legislative sometimes following what we've done. And that's one of the beauties of being very proactive. So as trustee Otto also mentioned, though, the issue with stabilization, that is something I think we need to put together as we begin, the legislative agenda that this board can probably look at and review. It's pretty straightforward with our board goals, what we're looking at. But those items are going to be with stabilization, the funding mechanism. I agree with you that nobody wants to stick their hand in that fire with the whole funding mechanism. But we all realize that the funding mechanism for community colleges is so obsolete, and it's not fair. And the stabilization issue is in part to that. So I'll be curious to see what we have in front of us. But overall, I think it was a very positive legislative session for the community colleges in general, and Long Beach in particular. So if there's no other comments, chairperson is trustee Baxter.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, Dale.
Dale, mine is a point, as I'm sitting here thinking, now I come up with things. You had said something about the funds, if they adopt the, providing the no tuition, kind of on a percentage basis. But aren't the fee waivers right now, it's not a percentage, it's like an entitlement? And why wouldn't this same college promise be on the same concept? In other words, if we have 3,000 people who qualify for the first semester, why wouldn't all 3,000 people who are eligible receive that allocation?
Right. And it could very well work out that way, but they have to start somewhere. And they're going to be doing some guesswork as to figuring out how many students are eligible. And they will ask each of the districts how many students are eligible.
Okay.
And then to submit your number.
Okay.
But they have to do some guestimating and, you know, distribute the money when it becomes available.
All right. Thank you. No other questions at this time? Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month.
Yes. Take care.
That's our legislative update. We're now to consent calendar. No one mentioned any items to be polled, is that correct, board members? So then, could I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as is? Trustee by, motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia. No items to be polled. Madam Student Trustee, with the exception of 5.15 and 5.16, student trustee, your vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, a vote on consent calendar.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent calendar is approved. We're now to human resources. Item 6.1, this is an employment contract. No student trustee vote on this one. This is an item to the board to approve the enrollment contract for Anne Marie Gable. Executive, new title, executive vice president, finance facilities and technology services as submitted. This employment contract provides for term of employment from November 15, 2017, through June 3, 2020. The contract provides for annual compensation of $237,678, along with health, welfare benefits, and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Baxter. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, your roll on?
I just want to congratulate executive vice president-to-be Anne Marie Gable. And I want to commend Superintendent President Dr. Ramali for the reorganization that she brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Trustee Malauulu?
I would like to add a congratulations to Anne Marie also. It is well-deserved. You have certainly more than proven yourself as an executive vice president without the title for many months. And we really appreciate everything that you've done. So thank you very much.
Other members on the item that we haven't voted on yet? But I guess this means that this is going to be one of the easier votes. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on this item.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. Student support services, 7.1, revised administrative regulation. I have to read some things here. This is where, submitted for information purposes only, does not require board action. In accordance with established practices, the revised administrative regulations have been distributed, discussed, and approved by the President's Leadership Council. Revised administrative regulation is being presented for informational purposes only, does not require board action. Revised include clarify levels of priority registration. The changes to the administrative regulations are being recommended as a result of their ongoing review to ensure compliance with the current educational and legal codes and accreditation standards. There is no vote. Are there any questions, members of the board at this time on this item? None? Thank you. We'll move forward then to item administrative services, 8.1. This is the 2017-18 first quarter budget performance report. And as you notice on the agenda, it will be followed by actually a vote for the state reporting. Student trustee, you will be voting on these items. So at this time, this is an informational item. Superintendent President?
Yes, I'd like to introduce and congratulate our new executive vice president, Anne Marie Gable, who is going to take us through the quarterly report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ramali. So as you can see up on your screens and up on the screen here for the public, this is the first page of our unrestricted journal fund. And what this is showing is, as of September 30, 2017, we have our adopted budget, the current budget, which basically means any changes that have been made since the adopted budget. The next column to the right are the actual cash receipts and expenditures that have been made as of September 30. And then we're doing a projection of where we think we're going to end the year as of June 30 of 2018. The last two columns are the variance columns, and so it's the variance between the current budget and the projected column. So as you can see here, there's not a whole lot of changes in revenue projected at this point in time. I'll take you to halfway mid-page, where it's prior year adjustment for the education protection account. We did receive $2,109. So you see that we are projecting that, or that's actual receipts, and so that will be over budget slightly. The other item on this page is the one-time mandated costs, where we have received $580,242 more than what was budgeted. When we prepared the budget, we were not able to estimate how much we'd receive, and we just received notice in late October of this funding. And so we are showing it in this projection at this point in time. So now moving to the next page. On page two, since it's only really three months into the fiscal year, we're not projecting any changes in any of our revenues. So there, down at the bottom, the total revenue and other financing sources, you can see the variance, the $582,000 is the total variance. And like I said earlier, the majority of that is the one-time mandated funds that came in. So moving to the expenditure side, page three of the report, the top portion is our academic salaries. And you can see the total academic salaries, we are budgeting $1.3 million to spend more than what we had originally budgeted. And that is primarily due to the anticipated faculty negotiations, as well as taking into account some vacancies that have occurred already. And so we've had some known salary changes. But the net effect of those is $1.3 million more in academic salaries. On the classified salaries, the next grouping of expenditures, we are projecting that we will spend $259,000 more than what was budgeted. And again, that's taking into account the AFT bargaining negotiated increases are included in here, but it's also offset by the vacancies that have occurred to date. On the benefit side, we are projecting that we'll spend $711,000 more than what was budgeted. And again, as we know, benefits are a function of salary. So when our salaries go up, our benefits go up. Moving through the next couple pages, it's too early to project any variances in our expenditures for supplies and materials or contract services and operating expenses. So at this point, we are assuming that every department will spend everything that's in their budget, so we have no variance projected. The same is true on page five for capital outlay. We have no variance projected at this point in time. And then this next section is something new that we've done, that hopefully will provide a little bit more information for the board. So what we've done is we've broken out the one-time expenditures that we have set aside for our one-time mandated costs and business process reviews, so that we can see the total $5 million that's been budgeted there. So hopefully, that's something that is useful for the board, it's something new that we're doing. This is the first time that we've done that. So overall, there at the bottom of the page are total expenditures. We are currently projecting that we're going to spend about $2.3 million more than what has been budgeted. That brings us to the next page, our other outgo. Again, no change in variance there. So I'll take you down to the operating surplus or deficit line item, where we're projecting that our deficit is going to increase by about $1.7 million. So that's the difference between the additional expenditures of $2.3, less that $590,000 in additional revenues. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Member of the board at this time, questions on this item? Very good. This is informational item only. We'll then move, if there's no questions, comments on this item, we'll move to 8.2. This is the, actually, the state reporting, 2017-18 first quarter financial status report. Student trustee, you will be able to vote on this. This is, let me read, the recommended action of the board trustees, approve the 2017-18 first quarter financial status report for the Long Beach Community College District. Authorized transmittal of the report to the California Community College Chancellor's Office as submitted. Can I entertain a motion in a second, please? Motion by trustee Baxter, second by trustee Otto. Question, comments on this one? If not, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Student trustee?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. That moves forward. We're now to reports. 9.1, academic senate president. Where are you?
Not here.
Report. 9.2, Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. I'd like to congratulate the bond team, under executive vice president Anne Marie Gable and her leadership, as well as Midhany Afram and Tim Wooton. We are up for a Green Leadership Award that is being sponsored by the Green California Schools and Community Colleges Summit. And Mrs. Gable will be there on November 28 to represent us, and I want to congratulate them on the work with sustainability. I also want to congratulate the entire college community. We are instituting a new resource center for sustain- We are instituting a new resource center for systems impacted and formerly incarcerated students that will have a location on PCC with a satellite location on LAC, and I want to congratulate faculty member Professor Dr. Anajita Madavi for leading this. It's extremely meaningful to the students who are turning their lives around, and I'm deeply honored and humbled that we are going to be a part of that. We also want to congratulate Long Beach City College, our faculty, staff and administrators. We will be winning an award called the 2017 Champion for Higher Education. This is coming to us from the Campaign for College Opportunity, and that means that we are one of the highest transfer institutions in the state of California, and we're really, really proud of that in terms of our associate degree for transfer attainment. That award will be given on December 5. Also, board members, in your package today, I wanted you to know that we have written letters to Congressman Alan Lowenthal, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez, and Congresswoman Nanette Bargan to support, help them have information, detailed information to help them support our DACA students. It tells them how many DACA students Long Beach City College has in their district and the dollar amount of funding that we would lose if the DACA proposal were to go through. So I wanted to let you know that we are actively pursuing this with our legislative contingent. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee?
It's 6:07, and we're at this point. This is amazing.
It's usually...
It's gonna rain or something.
10 o'clock at night.
10 o'clock at night? I know. Anyways, so as far as my report today, as the ASB president mentioned earlier, we will be going to the Student Center for California Community Colleges Convention this weekend. I'm so looking forward to it because, you know, that's where I get to meet all the other student trustees, and that's where we get to, you know, discuss variety of issues from, you know, homelessness in our campuses to, you know, addressing veterans' care and ultimately the foundations that each of us have. So, that's predominantly what I'm gonna, you know, touch upon this weekend, and I'm looking forward to that. And then, these are four more weeks left, and we're almost done. I think it's like four to five more weeks. I already chose my class for next semester. I'm going to be taking 13 units, so I'm not going to do 19 anymore. And then, I should be graduating, so I'm looking forward to that. And my birthday is on graduation, so that's when, my birthday is yesterday. So yeah, other than that, that pretty much concludes my report, and I'm really thankful that we ended at 6:08 today.
You don't want us to sing happy birthday to you, too, do you? After hearing that last rendition, probably not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Trustees, we'll begin with trustee Baxter, followed by trustee Otto.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just have, believe it or not, a brief report. My report last month was even briefer, but anyway, first of all, I want to thank Supervisor Janice Hahn. She held a Women in Labor Opportunities Forum here last Friday that was attended by all the major unions, and the idea was getting more women in the trades. And working on this was our welding professor, Julie Snyder, who coordinated this, and so I want to congratulate her. And at the forum, different females talked about their jobs and how getting into the trades is a good idea, and this has been something the college has done for years, encouraging women to look at the trades as an employment opportunity. So I hope that we continue with this, and I was very proud of having Supervisor Hahn on campus. I was in the Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, and I want to congratulate our veteran students who were there, the president's ambassadors and the ASB representatives, and I think it's important that we are in these kinds of activities because it shows the community what we're doing, and it makes an impact, and it was especially, I was very gratified how many people cheered when our truck went by, our lovely truck, went by, and so that, I think that was a really good activity. Lastly, I wanted to give a report on the state of the homeless students on campus. We had a fundraiser on November 5 that was put on by faculty, staff and community members in the Helping the Homeless Associate Group, and we raised money, and what this money goes for is bus passes, meal tickets at the cafeteria, food, grocery gift cards, gas gift cards, and also our pantries at both campuses. The reason I'm bringing this up is it's amazing how many people do not know that we do have nutrition centers in the health services offices at both campuses, and any student, all they have to do is bring their ID, can go there and get food and toiletries and things like that, and so I just want to make sure that our students understand that, and that we are very, very supportive, trustee Zia and I, of the homeless students, but we're also very proud of the students that we have helped, and we're helping more due to the donations that we get from the public, and so things are progressing very well, and so I'm very pleased with that. So that's my report.
Thank you. For the record, when she made the comment, she wasn't here at our last meeting. That's why her report was very brief, the last meeting.
I was thinking of you.
Trustee Otto, followed by trustee Malauulu.
Yeah, I want to congratulate our veterans as well. I was in the veterans' parade last Saturday, and I'm on my way to Sacramento tomorrow, excuse me, to San Jose tomorrow for the CCLC convention, annual convention, and there's a lot of good and interesting things that are going on there, and with that, I'll defer to my other board members.
Trustee Malauulu?
Thank you. I have a couple of things to report. First of all, after our last meeting, a couple days later, I was able to go to San Diego to attend the very first conference of the California Association of Black School Educators, and I was very interested in attending because it was the first time that they'd ever hosted a conference. It was a three-day event, and I was really impressed by the effort, and the one thing that my takeaway from that conference was there were, it was a great mixture of community colleges as well as high school educators there, and I was able to sit at a table with high school teachers, which I haven't done in a very long time. I taught high school for 17 years, and I haven't been in the company in the presence of high school teachers for many, many years, and to sit at a table with them and really try to understand what they are struggling with to get their students prepared to come to our forum, it just, it was very refreshing, and it just reaffirmed how we're all related and how all the work that we do really has that one common denominator of students. So that was a great, great experience, and I look forward to seeing what else CABSE does in the future. I drove up from San Diego and picked up my son and went to homecoming that night, and it was a lot of fun. It was interesting to see, I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to experience this year's homecoming, but it was a spooktacular Halloween theme. So the entire homecoming court was dressed in ghoulish costumes.
Very cool.
It was really neat. I'd never seen anything like that. Usually, you know, you see the homecoming princes and princes dressed up formally. Well, they were, but they had blood splattered on them, and they had missing limbs or extra fingers coming out of their heads, so it was, I took some pictures, I haven't had a chance to post them, but it was really neat. So I'd like to just commend the student council, the ASB and the student senate, all the volunteers for being so creative and for doing something so interesting and unique. On October 31, unfortunately, the board was not able to participate in our costume contest as we did last year. We were the social board, but I did see the pictures of everybody else on campus. I was on a third grade field trip that day, so we didn't, we kind of dropped the ball. But next year, I promise, we're going to come back strong. Our board is going to come back with costumes next year. We'll get you guys. I'm going to skip chronologically the highlight of my month and talk about it at the end, just to share with you three quick things. On Saturday, November 11, in the evening, I have a, my oldest daughter had knee surgery on Friday, so I've been limiting my time out of the house, and I was able to run to the store real quick. I was walking through Albertson's in my district in Wrigley on Willow and Long Beach Boulevard, minding my own business, and I could see this small group of maybe five or six people holding up phones, and they were doing like a Facebook Live or Snapchat Live or something, and they, you know, they were relatively quiet, but you could tell that they're videotaping something, and then I could hear them say something, something, "Long Beach City College", and I'm going. So I take my cart and I do that nosy thing, you know, the shoppers do where they kind of get a little close to see, "What, what, what, Long Beach City College, what?". And as it turned out, there were maybe five or six people there, three of them were Long Beach City College students, and the other lady running it was an organization called Love Beyond Limits. It's a nonprofit, and what they're doing is they're finding college-age students to mentor young people, middle-aged students. And the lady, the executive director, was there, and so they were at Albertson's asking for donations for an event they were having, so I just happened to be the trustee representing that district, so I happened to have a business card on me, and I happened to speak to the manager, and they were able to increase the donations from, I think, 10 whatever pallets or whatever large volume of Gatorade to 25, and they were able to help. But, the best part of that exchange was that these LBC students, you know, they were, they were kind of like, "You mean, you know, people who work at Long Beach City College also live here, and they shop at Albertson's?". And it was so, like, I was driving home, and I literally had tears in my eyes to know that our students are involved in things like this. I didn't know they were involved in that, but they think we're real people, too. So for those of us up here, you know, it was probably one of the best things that ever happened to me as a trustee, to be able to see these students at Albertson's doing, doing the thing, you know? Okay, so on, yesterday, I attended the community welcome for Dr. Romali at Bogarts at the convention center, at the sports arena, and it was really nice. Congratulations, you had a wonderful turnout. A lot of people in the community are there to support you, and I really appreciate how many people are there supporting us, because if they support our superintendent president, they're supporting the college. And today, Dr. Romali and I met with former trustee and current council member Roberto Uranga, just, you know, a meeting of the mind and to see what we can do mutually to benefit each other in our districts, and it was a great meeting, just to let you guys know that good things are happening, both at the city council level and with the community college, and we're working together. Now, the highlight of my report is on November 8 and 9, together with the Theater Department, Greg Mortensen, Tony Carrero, Nate Stufel, Kathy Crane, we were able to produce our first ever community theater project. I recognize some of your faces, and some of you were able to attend. It was a great, it was exactly what I envisioned it to be. It was students telling stories of Long Beach City College and the city of Long Beach and how it impacted them. We also had one of our Hall of Fame, this year Hall of Fame winners, Jim Ostich, who performed a monologue. There were six monologues, six different walks of life. It was put on by the theater art class, Tart class, and the Spotlight Theater students. So if you happen to know anybody involved in a theater program, please pat them on the back, because, let me tell you, it was, you know, between classes, rehearsals, FaceTiming. I took a family trip right in the middle of production, so I'm having to FaceTime some of these monologues, but they did an amazing job, and it was great because it happened at PCC, and we plan on doing something with that. The potential is there, and the theater program is so grateful to have a platform, to have students to be able to share stories of the community and for the community. So please let the theater department know that we see them, and they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Zia?
Thank you, President Kellogg. I will attempt to be brief, but if I go a little bit over, I apologize in advance. So just to echo trustee Baxter's remarks, on November 3, Supervisor Hahn and Metro held their event at Long Beach City College. It was called Woman Build Metro. It was very inspiring to see our district be considered for such a huge event, and I want to commend Julie Snyder. I did ask them for the future to keep the board in mind. I just randomly found out the day before, so hopefully in the future, the entire board of trustees would be invited, and so I was assured that it'll be, enhancements will be made in the near future by Metro staff. It was a very fantastic event, and hopefully they'll have it here again so you can all experience it, but hopefully we represented the board well. On November 8, the Boys and Girls Club had their annual gala, and I had the privilege of being invited, and I happened to be invited by the same person who invited the owner of Hotel Maya, Kam Bapa, I was his guest, and Erin Gruell, for those of you who don't know Erin, Hilary Swank played her in Freedom Riders, that's with a W, and it is an absolutely inspiring movie. It was in 1996, and Patrick Dempsey plays her, former husband. If you want to get an understanding of how Long Beach works, watch that movie. It's fantastic. She transformed the education system and really the education behavior and the staccato approach to dealing with at-risk youth, and especially youth who come from very underserved and underprivileged backgrounds in the very heart of my district. So, I happened to connect with her, and I asked her to consider coming to Long Beach City College to inspire our students, and I'm very happy to announce that they're seriously looking at it. I will connect them to our superintendent president, Dr. Romali, and make sure that, it's just riveting. If you haven't had a chance to watch that movie, definitely see it, it's a little bit older, but to bring her here would be fantastic, of course, hopefully at a nominal cost. November 5, as trustee Baxter reported, we did have an event that the Homeless Student Task Force put together for our homeless students, and I really, really want to thank trustee Baxter for doing the heavy lifting, if not most of the work. I just attended, so I really thank you, trustee Baxter, for being my partner and really taking this to a whole nother level. You're truly a godsend. Thank you. And November 13, I didn't have the great pleasure of being at the College Promise Event. I heard it was fantastic. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the president of Israel was in town in LA, so I had the great pleasure of being invited to see him, and had to pass through quite a bit of security, but nevertheless, that's the only reason why I would miss it, so I'm sure it was fantastic, and I heard great reviews about it. And then lastly, I just want to have a call to action to my board members. I am reaching out to industry, to the people that I know in the corporate sector and in business, and also in public agencies to hire our students and create opportunities for internships. In fact, I've asked, I've been, they have suggested to me that, "Why don't you guys, in your application process, call us to action and ask us to be better by even a checklist in your statement of qualification requests? Have you hired LBCC students? So if you want work from us, you know, have you helped our students?". And it would be silent on whether, how many points it would be allocated to it, or if any, but just creating the awareness in the industry to hire our students, this is something I truly believe in, so that we can promote people studying and living and working in Long Beach, and we invest in our own. That's all I have, President Kellogg.
Thank you. Finally, we mentioned earlier, we have coming up and looking forward, is that this weekend, our football team is going to be playing, hosting Bakersfield College in their playoff game, so congratulations on a successful season. This is one of the things they get to move forward towards, and our women's volleyball is moving into the playoffs as well, and our congratulations to our coach, who, she finally gave birth to those twins during the season, or she's now in bed rest? They don't even, I have not...
Last week's...
So she's, she, so she now has a complete team for beach volleyball, so, but anyway, congratulations to the team, a phenomenal season, but the season's not over, so we wish them the very best. This season, as we're moving forward, we're obviously like to wish everyone, on behalf of the board, Thanksgiving is coming up next week, so everyone have a wonderful and joyous Thanksgiving, and remember why we celebrate that day. As we move into December, there's lots of events that this board will be attending, parades in our different areas, the Wrigley has one, the Belmont Shore, and then a lot of other activities that go on during the holidays, so we wish everyone the very best during the holidays as well. And then finally, I would just ask that as we close this meeting, that we can, that we adjourn our meeting in the memory of Jerry Caligari. Jerry Caligari actually attended Long Beach City College at one time. He's an individual who's very involved in, a very local activist, worked at City Hall. He is tragically passed away... He has tragically passed away a few weeks ago, very suddenly, before his time, obviously. And, but very involved in organizations, community efforts, and will be truly missed. So I would just ask the board that we adjourn the meeting in the memory of Jerry Caligari. With that, I wish everyone the very best.
The bargaining units?
Yes. Trustee Zia.
I believe we have a bargaining units, or are you finished with the agenda? Okay.
No.
Sorry about that. I thought you were concluding the meeting. I apologize.
Yeah, I will, at that point in time. So, so the next item is trustee committees. I don't have anything to report out in the trustee committee at this time. The next item is future reports. Their items are listed that we have, future reports that will be on our agenda in the next coming year. We also just, I'm gonna leave it at that. I don't want to add any more to what we've already, but we do have other items that we are going to have to be looking at, including a board retreat, and I should have mentioned that during my trustee comments, that we will be having in the future. So, but the future reports, that's just for informational. And then finally, we are now to the reports from the bargaining associations. I don't know which ones are here, if we'd like to speak.
Janice.
Would any of the bargaining is, Janice, you're hiding behind persons, so.
I'm behind any guy.
All right. All right, thank you. So there's no reports from the three bargaining units. So we'll move forward to the public comments on non-agenda items, keeping that same spirit, I guess. I have no, no one who wishes to speak on the non-agenda items. There is no need for a second session. So at this time, I would ask that we adjourn the meeting to our December 19th meeting here at the LAC campus, and we'll be adjourning this meeting in the memory of Jerry Caligari. Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful holiday. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.